This meeting will now come to order. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Binsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council Liaison Bowden.
Here.
Council Liaison Camacho.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of February 16th, 2016. We have one item on our study session agenda this evening, and that is legislative update. I will turn it over to City Manager Carl Swenson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet, and councilmembers. As the mayor mentioned, we have one item, but it'll take a little time to get through. It's an important item, and as the council is well aware, each year when the state legislature is in session, we're active, working with our legislators and our delegation from Peoria, as well as legislators and the governor's office, and are working also with the League of Cities, who put together a legislative agenda that we're often a part of and support in many ways. And I know you have been getting information directly from Thomas Atkins and from email, but tonight's an opportunity to talk about the status of the bills that we are in favor of and also those that we are opposed to, because there are always those each year. And Thomas and Jenna will give you a good overview of all the different bills that we're tracking and progress that we're making. So with that, I'll turn it over to Thomas Atkins, our Intergovernmental Affairs Director. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to be here today to provide an update on the 2016 legislative session. Before we begin, seeing as how this is our first presentation before council, we wanted to reintroduce ourselves. You've known me well, but Jenna Carrico is a new addition, a relatively new addition to the city. She's been with us for about four months now. Jenna came from the Arizona House of Representatives, where she was a legislative research analyst focused on local government issues. Outside of the city, Jenna is the president-elect of the Phoenix Chapter of Amigos, let me make it the title right, Amigos de las Americas, a nonprofit organization that is devoted to connecting young people with service opportunities in Latin America. And so we're grateful to have her part of our team, and she is already doing more than enough to earn her keep, so we're glad to have her here. Together, Jen and I have combined about 15 legislative sessions under our belt, and we've seen different times, with good financial times and bad financial times, and that tends to play a role in how long these legislative sessions are. One quick note, as we begin our presentation, we're going to be covering a lot of bills. There's well over 1,300 bills that have been introduced. We're not going to cover every single one of those, thankfully. We're going to hit some of the highlights, as Carl mentioned, that we are most focused on. At any point in our presentation, if you would like to pause and ask some questions and get some additional information, please do so. We also have Deputy City Manager Jeff Tyne with us here, who's also an expert on these So in our roles as Intergovernmental Affairs Director and Coordinator, Jen and I advocate for the, or on behalf of the city, for a variety of legislative and regional issues. This entails identifying and researching legislation and working with local and regional agencies, along with providing support for the mayor, council, and manager in their roles on regional committees. Real quick, I wanted to highlight a couple of leadership roles that our mayor and council are serving on. Particularly, I wanted to highlight that Mayor Carlet was, this past year, appointed to the Executive Committee of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. This is an important leadership role that ensures Peoria will have a seat at the table as the league develops its policy agenda each session. Additionally, the mayor serves on a few MAG committees, including Regional Council, Transportation Policy Committee, and Economic Development Committee. Additionally, the mayor also serves on the Westmark Board of Directors and on the board for the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. Vice Mayor Binsbacher serves on the MAG Human Services Committee and is quickly becoming a leader in that committee as a leading voice from the West Valley. Mayor Protem Edwards serves on the Valley Metro Board of Directors and helps advocate for our city's transit needs. Mr. Edwards also serves on the National League of Cities Community and Economic Development Committee. Councilmember Leoni serves on the National League of Cities University Leadership Fellow Committee and the Human Development Committee. Councilmember Patena serves on the, serves as the city's representative on the Luke West Valley Council. This council meets quarterly and discusses issues that are affecting Luke Air Force Base and the surrounding community. This is part of Councilmember Patena's role as the designated Veterans Affairs Liaison for the council. What I've listed is, are just those committees that IGA actively supports. We want to acknowledge and recognize that all of our councilmembers are obviously active in the community and play a role in leadership in various organizations as well. One point that I really want to make and emphasize is that Peoria enjoys a very positive reputation amongst our peers and in these organizations. Our jobs as representing the city are made much easier by virtue of the fact that our council and manager have developed a positive culture of success that is the envy of every other community. This is truly a testament to years of good policy development by council and excellent policy implementation by management and staff. Of all these organizations that are pictured on this slide, the one that takes priority during the first half of the year is the Arizona Legislature. Beginning in every January, more than 1,000 bills are introduced to change some aspect of Arizona state law. Our focus is on legislation that may have an impact on city authority, operations, or finances. I will talk about our process for developing positions on legislation later in the presentation, but one point I want to make now is that our success in IGA is dependent entirely on the support that we receive from city staff and departments. We receive this support from across all departments and are grateful for it. As subject matter experts, we depend on the experience of our staff and their insight to understand the impact of legislation that will impact our city. Without their vast knowledge, particularly of the context and background surrounding some of these pieces of legislation, our jobs would be much more difficult. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our top-notch staff for their help, and in particular, I'd like to acknowledge the help and leadership of our city manager and his team, as well as our city attorney, Steve Kemp, and his experience. Together with our contracted lobbying support and the support from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, Jenna and I lobby on behalf of the city to promote and protect the interests of Peoria at the Capitol.
Mayor and council, the 52nd Legislature's second regular session commenced on January 11th. We're currently in the sixth week of the session. The last deadline to introduce bills was last Monday, so we know that there are about 1,300 pieces of legislation out there right now, as Thomas mentioned. Last year, we saw about 1,200. Once bills are introduced, the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House have the opportunity to assign these bills to one or more committees. Bills have six weeks to be heard in committee in their original house, their original chamber, and if they make it through that process in that chamber, they then have four additional weeks in the other chamber to be heard. Committee gives the public and the League of Cities and Towns and Thomas and myself the opportunity to sign in on bills, state our position, and testify in committee. Bills that pass both houses are then sent to the governor. Currently, we have one bill signed by the governor. It's a House Bill 2468, which was an emergency measure that appropriated $1.8 million to continue the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force program. Just to give you an idea, last year, we saw about 324 bills signed, so we anticipate a few more will cross his desk. We do have a Republican majority in both chambers. The Senate is led by President Andy Biggs of Gilbert, and the House is led by Speaker David Gowan of Sierra Vista. Peoria encompasses three legislative districts, LD1, 21, and 22. All nine of our elected delegation are Republican. And of note, Mr. David Livingston serves on House leadership as majority whip from LD22. This session, the following themes have emerged, which Thomas will expand on in the upcoming slides: education funding in terms of the special session in late October to fund the K-12 lawsuit, J-TED funding, PSPRS reform, budget planning with a projected surplus, and the focus on restricting local control.
So perhaps the biggest issue that's been discussed this year so far at the State Capitol is education funding. As you may recall, last year, there was a special session that addressed K-12 finance and an ongoing lawsuit between the state of Arizona and Cave Creek School District. The outcome of that special session was an agreement to fund K-12 education through the use of state trust land dollars to the tune of $3.5 billion over the next 10 years. This plan was approved by the legislature and is contingent upon voter approval of Proposition 123 at the May election. If approved, this proposal will increase the amount of money from state land trusts divvied up to schools. In addition to this infusion of money, it is anticipated that K-12 schools will receive an additional $84 million in this year's budget based on inflation and student count growth. Another point of focus right now that's in the media is restoring some cuts to joint technological education districts. Last year, the legislature and the governor passed a budget that cut approximately $30 million from J-Teds. There was some strong outcry from the community and a grassroots approach from many legislators in the House and the Senate to restore those cuts. The results are two bills that are currently moving through the process that would restore about $28 million to J-Teds. The question right now is which bill will be passed, the House bill or the Senate bill, and there seems to be some contention about who gets bragging rights for that. Lastly, the governor is proposing in his budget an additional $8 million in funding for universities. This would be tied to a new resident funding model. The universities are generally supportive of that, but they are hoping to get an additional 24 million, or hoping to get that number up to $24 million. We anticipate that will be negotiated as part of the budget process moving forward.
Excuse me, Thomas, before you move on, the K-12 $84 million, is that designated for anything in particular, or can it just go into general fund?
Mayor, it's my understanding that that is part of the regular K-12 funding formula.
Okay, because I heard that there was going to be some facilities funding specifically.
We will look into that and get back to you and the council.
Thank you.
The other main event down at the Capitol this session is public safety pension reform. This is a truly historic agreement that has been reached and led by Peoria's own state Senator Debbie Lesko. This plan was in the works for well over a year and is really a testament to her personal ability to bring together labor, employers, and other outside stakeholders to reach an accord. The legislation has gone through the process and been signed by the governor. There is a referendum that is tied to that because it impacts current retirement benefits for employees, and that will also be on the May ballot along with Proposition 123. It's important to note that this reform really just affects the public safety pension reform system, PSPRS. It does not affect ASRS, the main state employee system, EORP, the elected official retirement system that's being phased out, CORP, which is Corrections Officers, or any other public retirement system. The biggest changes in this reform are really tied to a new tier of employees, which are new hires to the system from and after July 1, 2017. These new employer, employees would have a choice in receiving either defined benefit or defined contribution retirement plan. If they choose a defined benefit plan, they would have a 50/50 contribution rate, which is a positive step. For current employees and those in the system, retirements would switch from an increase through a permanent benefit increase, a PBI, to a guaranteed 2% cost of living adjustment each year. This package of legislation accomplishes many important needed reforms. However, there are still areas of concern for cities, such as the outstanding liabilities for those employees that are currently in the system. This reform package doesn't really address those unfunded liabilities as they currently stand. The other points that are still outstanding is the notion of pooling assets and consolidating the administration side of the boards. Thankfully, Senator Lesko has included in her reform a study committee that's going to look at those issues and report back on its recommendations, and we're optimistic to be a part of that and report back on some good successes.
Governor Ducey released his $9.5 billion proposed budget the Friday after session started. His budget contained no tax proposal, no proposed changes to state shared revenue, and maintained the shift from HERF to the Department of Public Safety that was in there last year, which was the $89.2 million off the top, and the shift from local governments to DOR, the Department of Revenue, which has maintained since last year the $11 million plus the 76 cents per capita for self-collecting cities. The legislature has not yet reached final negotiations on a budget, but according to the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, there's an estimated cash balance of $625 million in fiscal year 2017. This does exclude the $460 million in the rainy day fund, and assuming the $625 million in one-time monies is spent, there's a projected structural balance of $26 million. It is noteworthy that if the governor signs the J-TED restoration of $28 million, there's a projected deficit with that bill, assuming that the one-time expenses, or the one-time capital of $625 million is all spent. Representative Justin Olson of Mesa will be in Glendale this Saturday on his statewide budget tour. They are, as I said, still deliberating on what the one-time options will be, as we said, one-time capital expenses, debt payoffs, and perhaps supplementing HERF funding.
Sorry, I need some clarification on the previous slide. So there's one-time funding, but the one-time funding could go away if he signs the J-TED bill, right?
Mayor, I'm sorry, the cash balance is $625 million, assuming that the legislature appropriates that in one-time funding. The projected $26 million surplus would be a deficit with the passing of the $28 million in J-TED funding. There'd be a $2 million budget deficit, if, assuming they use the entire $625 million.
So if you talk about that bottom paragraph there, where they are going to go on tour to talk about those options, what amount are they talking about?
$625 million.
That full amount?
Correct.
So they're going around talking to people about what they would like to see in terms of payments?
That is my understanding.
Are they talking to municipalities?
They'll be in Glendale on Saturday afternoon and Gilbert Saturday morning.
Okay, so they're going to two locations?
Yes, and this is the second stop on the tour. I believe there's a couple more in northern Arizona, but I'll be happy to get you the full press release on that.
Okay, and so are we going to go there? Will you guys be there talking about, are HERF funds?
Mayor, we will make sure that we are there represented. I'm not sure of the structure of it, if it's more meant for the citizenry, but we will be participating in the budget process to make sure that our voice is heard.
Okay.
Yeah, I think a clarification, Mayor Carlet. I don't believe that the meetings in Glendale and in Gilbert are for cities. I think they're for citizens, correct?
Ah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Citizens.
Yeah, but I think, I think that the, and Thomas or Jenna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you'll be trying to do is, working with the League of Cities, make sure that the municipal point of view is heard, even though their outreach sessions are designed more for citizens or business owners, correct?
Mayor, City Manager, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It was worth a shot.
So with all of the legislation that is moving through the process, it's important that we be on top of those issues and all the committee agendas. As we engage on a bill and have come to a decision point of supporting or opposing, I want to talk a little bit about the process that we go through with that, and would like to first highlight the first prism through which we look at all the bills, and that is a basis on the council policy goals, which are listed on the screen, of community building, enhancing current services, preserving the natural environment, economic development, leadership and image, and total planning. So the process for taking a position on a bill starts with Jenna and I reviewing every piece of legislation that is introduced. Depending on the subject area, we will refer the relevant bills to city staff for their review and insight. Based on the feedback that we receive, we will consult with management and the mayor, if appropriate, to start our process to move forward. As we look at each bill, we look at it through the prism of our legislative priorities, which we'll talk about here. Listed on the screen right now are two of our top priorities, which are to protect local control and maintain fiscal sustainability. Unfortunately, this year has been witness to some strong anti-city sentiment. The sentiment was present in Governor Ducey's State of the State address, which the mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Edwards attended. In his speech, the governor threatened to withhold state shared revenues for cities that sought to enact certain types of regulations pertaining to minimum wage and employers having to provide paid time off for employees. His example has been followed by legislation aimed at punishing cities by restricting local control. One such bill that I want to highlight is Senate Bill 1487, which is sponsored by Senate President Andy Biggs. This bill would withhold the city's portion of state shared revenues if that city was found to have an ordinance or regulation or policy that violates state law or the Arizona Constitution. Unfortunately, this bill does not address the authority that is given to charter cities in the Arizona Constitution or address the lack of due process. We respectfully oppose such efforts and will work and continue to work actively with the League and every other Arizona city and town to stop such infringements on local control. Another example of bills that seem to interfere with local control is House Bill 2568, which changes the way that community facilities districts are formed and governed. This bill is sponsored by the House Speaker David Gowan and stems from some issues that some developers were having in southern Arizona. The bill would remove the discretion of a city to decide when or if to form a CFD and would place landowners in charge of a taxing authority by giving them majority control of the CFD Board of Directors. This bill passed out of its original committee without opposition. However, the sponsor and backers of the bill are currently working with league staff and, as well as staff from the city of Peoria and other cities, to address concerns raised during the committee hearing. As you are all aware, the council has been approached by developers about CFDs many times. Council has always been very thoughtful in responding to such requests, and such an approach has resulted in beautiful developments within our city that have appropriate infrastructure in place to support them. Removing council's discretion with regards to the use of CFDs represents a serious concern to our future planned development areas. To minimize the impact of this legislation, as I said, we will be actively working with the sponsor and the supporters of the legislation to find a resolution to this issue. And should go without saying, but on this and all the other issues that we're going to bring up, we will be providing frequent updates, in addition to the weekly email, but as needed, communication and mayor and the communication with the manager daily.
Thomas, before you move on, I just, I just have to say something here. This is, a CFD is a taxing authority, and it allows a developer to come in and utilize funds that they get from taxing the citizens, the residents who will live in that district. And as things stand now, this council is the current board for the CFDs that we have in place, and we can make those taxing decisions based on the overall picture of our city as a whole and not only the residents who live in that district right now, but the future residents, you know, second or third-time homebuyers. And I think we've all had a little bit of a taste of what can happen in the future of a CFD, so we have to be very, very, very careful about how these are planned. This bill, the way it is currently written, would put the majority of the board as the landowner or developer. So that means they would, they could win every, you know, debate, every battle, every issue. And then they would develop and leave, and we would be here with that taxing district. It is an irresponsible piece of legislation. I'm not sure how it is going to serve this southern Arizona area that needs this so badly, but if it can't be contained in that one geographic area, we will have a major problem. And every city who has large swaths of land, like the city of Peoria does, will have a major problem, because it's going to, my understanding is it's 600 square feet is the minimum amount of...
600 acres, Mayor.
600 acres, excuse me, and a mile. So, you know, we've got, we've got lots of those kinds of parcels in northern Peoria, as well as Surprise and Goodyear and all of the West Valley cities that are still emerging and growing. So this really applies to all of us in a, in a very deep way. It's going to, it's going to hit our citizens that we are going to have to be responsible for in the long run, in a, in a way that, you know, is taxing them. The developer's taxing them, and the developer is deciding how and when they get taxed. And we will not have the authority to really do much more than just weigh in with an opinion. It's very, it's a bill that's going to affect us for the long term, and hopefully, there can be some way that we can, if not eradicate it, then certainly mitigate it. So I wish you the very best of luck with that. It's a really important piece of legislation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's near the top of our list, and we will be actively working on this as it goes through the quote-unquote sausage-making process.
Thank you.
Jeff, I know you've been working on this. Did you want to add anything to this one?
Yeah, very well said, Mayor. I think you hit really on the concerns we have for our citizens, because in many of these tax rates, they would be very different. And once the CFD is in place and the infrastructure's there, and it might look the same as what's just right across the street, and there's a very different tax rate for generations to come, and it's oftentimes left at the city to try and explain that. At the same time, you have to worry about the risk and the burden it puts in. A lot of the discussions that would happen when these CFD requests have come to you as a council and potentially as a board, is to look at what is the relative risk of the success of those projects? What is the backstop? What is the funding? What would happen to that tax rate? Could it float, given how many units come in? That type of conversation would completely change should the legislation go forward as such. So to the mayor's point, I think that's exactly right, is it will be incumbent upon us to really educate those that are making this decision to be aware of those. So thank you very much.
Protections for our citizens, that's the biggest issue.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Thanks.
In terms of, kind of moving on, in terms of fiscal sustainability, we are heavily focused, obviously, on protecting our share of state shared revenues. This revenue comprises about a third of Peoria's total general fund revenue and is used to pay for critical services. Senate Bill 1487, which I mentioned earlier, thankfully, is the only bill out there at the moment that specifically targets state shared revenues. However, in the budget process, things tend to pop up in quick and mysterious ways, and so we will be keeping a vigilant eye on that and keep you updated as those developments play out. As Jenna mentioned, we are also working to restore some of the sweeps to HERF used to fund DPS. One option that was put forth by the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, which is the budgeting agency for the legislature, did propose to use some of that $625 million as a one-time infusion into HERF. While not ideal, we'd like to see the elimination of that sweep. This is something that we're advocating for because it would provide us some needed dollars very soon so that we could start building those roads and infrastructure that we need in our community.
Excuse me, Thomas, for people who don't know at home, maybe, could you explain what HERF is?
HERF is the Highway User Revenue Fund, and actually, you know what? This is a good opportunity for Jenna to describe. She's done a lot of research on this when she was at the Capitol.
No pressure.
Yeah.
HERF comprises a number of things. Use fuel taxes, vehicle registration fees are put into this pot. The issue is there are statutorily set percentages. For example, 19% of HERF will go to counties, 27.5% to municipalities, and then an additional 3% to municipalities with a population over 300,000. It is currently set in statute that the legislature cannot take more than $10 million off the top of that to fund DPS, the Department of Public Safety. However, since early 2000s, that number has continuously increased. As I said earlier, last year, the shift was $89.2 million, and that is projected to be the same in the governor's budget.
Jenna wrote the book on HERF on research staff, so I'll defer to her on those issues. One point that we do want to make, and it should go without saying, but we always like to say it, is that obviously, we do support the Department of Public Safety, the Highway Patrol, and the important role that they fill in our community. However, we just believe that they should receive a dedicated funding that doesn't take away dollars from our necessary street and infrastructure projects. This session, we are also supporting the resolutions of the League of Cities and Towns. These resolutions were developed over the past year and brought forward by individual Arizona cities to address specific issues in their communities. There are currently four bills moving through the process that came from the League, that were sponsored by cities through the League process. These deal with issues such as regulating substance abuse homes, to improving the annexation process for single property owners, to a bill that we're going to talk about some more in depth, which deals with cities using population estimates each year for their state shared revenue distribution, so that in the future, those communities will avoid having to go through a mid-decade census. We are also working to preserve and manage natural resources in our city, again tying into the council policies. One bill that we are monitoring closely is House Bill 2391. This bill would prohibit a city from charging a new water connection fee for the purpose of paying for the acquisition of a wastewater or drinking water corporation or business. AMWA has been, taken the lead on this issue, this issue, and working with the League and home builders to develop a consensus amendment. And as of late this afternoon, we saw a draft that had some initial buy-in from the home builders, so we're... builder, so we're cautiously optimistic that we might have reached an accord. We are grateful to AMWA and the League for their leadership on this issue and other similar bills. Additionally, we are actively supporting Luke and are always in the lookout for legislation that might have a negative impact to the operations at Luke. As you might recall, over the past few years, we've, Peoria has really taken a lead on this issue of landing the F-35 mission at Luke Air Force Base, which we were able to accomplish because of a good partnership of West Valley cities and the state. Arizona is unique in that our state laws actually spell out some noise attenuation zones and other protections for the base in law, and other states don't have that, and so that makes us really unique. And Peoria has always been a leader on these issues. Lastly, we are vigilant in looking for legislation that might pose a negative impact to our top-tier quality of life. One bill of concern that I want to mention is House Bill 2517, which requires cities to limit regulations on businesses and professions unless the city can prove that such regulations are necessary to ensure public health or safety. This is problematic for a number of reasons. It's overly broad, but it may also restrict cities' ability to restrict where businesses are located, through zoning ordinances, and a number of other things, even up to including tax licenses. As was stated before, we believe such attempts clearly violate the authority of local governments to do the job that they were created to do. We will be working with the League and other organizations to stop those bills.
Excuse me, Thomas, would charter cities be excluded from this in any way?
Mayor, the bill doesn't provide any exceptions for that, and chances are it would depend, the bill provides a way for citizens to bring in action against the city if they feel that a regulation is in violation of this law. It doesn't provide an exception for charter cities, and so, as often is the case, this would likely be settled in the courts. But we would, and I would defer to our city attorney and city manager, but we feel quite strongly that the Arizona Constitution provides some clear powers and authorities for charter cities. And then recently, a Supreme Court case dealing with the city of Tucson and voting and how they do their voting, the decision also made it very clear that the founders of Arizona recognize the separate and individual authority of charter cities and calls their charters even, you know, local constitutions. And so, we would, it would play out as it would, but we feel confident that our position as a charter city is unique.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and just to add to that, and certainly Mayor Carlet, you'll recall, from time to time, there have been cases where cities have had to litigate issues like this. And Jenna was explaining the HERF funding distribution a few minutes ago, and you'll recall, several years ago, the League of Cities did have to file suit against the state when there was an inappropriate intrusion into that breakdown, legal breakdown that she described, where funds that were directed to cities got sequestered and taken for state purposes. So, obviously, that's always our last resort. We certainly try to resolve everything without that, but from time to time, it does become necessary.
On this slide are some additional pieces of legislation. Some of them may look familiar, as Thomas has touched on many of them, as well as from our weekly emails that we send every Thursday night. Of note, 2483, otherwise known as the census bill, would allow cities like us to use either our decennial census or annual population estimates every year for purposes of distributing state shared revenue. The League adopted this as an official resolution in November, and currently the bill's passed committee unanimously and is awaiting third read in the House.
One important note on that bill that I want to emphasize is that this will allow cities to update their populations every year based on the Census Bureau estimates. And this is important because the current process right now is tied entirely to a decennial census, which has created the necessity for doing a mid-decade census. Fast-growing communities like Peoria rely on those state shared revenues to pay for the growth, and so this bill is important for us because not only will it allow us to annually update that number, which provides for more stable budgeting, but it ensures that we won't have to do another mid-decade census, which will save us money in the long run as well, and staff time as well.
Thomas, I believe you touched on House Bill 2391. House Bill 2549 would have prohibited municipalities from giving preference to the type of piping materials used in water, wastewater, or storm drainage projects, funding with state monies. We do have good news on this bill. After conveying our concerns and working with Nick and the sponsor, Representative Leach has graciously agreed to stop this bill this year, and it was struck off the House Government and Higher Education Committee agenda this afternoon.
Senate Bill 1449 is more of an interesting bill, but it's something that we're paying attention to closely, and it has to do with some new statewide regulations pertaining to unmanned aircraft or drones. You've probably seen them around, these quadcopters especially are flying around. And so, some cities are in the process of adopting ordinances to create some regulations with these. The industry behind them has come forward and is trying to preempt the ability of cities to enact such regulations by creating a statewide law for it. They've introduced Senate Bill 1449, but there are still some concerns with it. Industry is working with stakeholders, including the League and law enforcement, to make sure that we have the ability, first and foremost, to protect our citizens and restrict these aircraft at sporting events. If law enforcement should have the occasion or need to use these things, that we retain that ability as well. The main holdup at this point seems to be a disagreement over whether cities will be allowed to regulate both hobbyists as well as commercial drones in the future of, say, Amazon or somebody like that sort of using these aircraft. It's still in the stakeholder process, the bill is kind of moving slowly. We'll provide an update on this one as it kind of moves forward. But again, public safety is our top concern on this and regulations as well.
House Bill 2026 is legislation introduced by Representative Mitchell. The underlying bill would eliminate our ability to collect transaction privilege tax on residential rentals, which would be an impact to Peoria of about $3 million. After a strong coalition formed against the bill, Representative Mitchell agreed to pull this legislation, but instead introduced an amendment to limit the tax prohibition on individuals who own and rent three or fewer properties within the same city. To get the votes needed in committee, he then reduced that threshold again to individuals who own two or fewer houses. After working with staff in the Budget Department, it looks like that would be an estimated impact to Peoria of just over $700,000. We are actively working to convey our concerns and work with our delegation to stop this legislation. This just got out of rules today.
One important note on this bill is that the sponsor, even in committee, as Jenna was saying, has said that his intention is to create, is to totally eliminate TPT, and that will have a $3 million annual hit to us. This is sort of the nose-under-the-tent approach, which we see a lot of times at the Capitol. And so we are still actively opposing this and are optimistic that we will be able to protect the city's interests.
His interests, when you had said eliminate TPT for rental.
For rental, yes, sorry, residential rental TPT.
Otherwise, we were really nervous.
Yes, much larger hit if that were the case. Let's see, 2267, this was a bill that was put forward by a representative from Kingman and had attempted to repeal the contracting changes that were made last year and replace them with some new requirements for use tax that all contractors would pay. One of the struggles that this bill faced is, ever since 2013, when the original TPT simplification was introduced, there's been changes and tweaks to it. And so, we are in a situation right now where contractors arguably are in a more confusing situation than they've ever been when it comes to construction sales tax. The bill was problematic to several organizations, home builders and others, including the League. Recognizing that the support for the legislation wasn't there, the sponsor yesterday agreed to hold the bill for this session and work on it over the interim, with some leaders on this issue, including Senator Alessio. It's our understanding that there is going to be an attempt next year to move entirely to a point-of-sale for construction, and that's something that we are, have concerns about because we don't understand the impact that that will be, not only to the city, but also the state has an impact on that one as well. And so we'll be working and participating on that as it goes through. It's my understanding the League is also going to be forming a task force similar to what they did with pension reform on this issue.
So Tom, it's just to clarify, if we do see legislation that were to move construction sales tax based on point-of-sale, the likely impact to the city would be negative?
Right.
Correct? In that, much of that would go towards large building suppliers that are in central locations, and so cities on the outlier would probably be affected by this?
Mayor Jeff, that is absolutely correct. So, it's entirely dependent on the materials you sell within your community. If you're a Litchfield Park, for example, that doesn't have any real significant retail, this would be going to zero, a massive hit for them. For us, we do have some, you know, locations, but it would still be, we think, a hit for us.
And also, isn't there some speculation that it'll be a large hit for the state itself, since a lot of materials are purchased from outside the state and brought in?
Mayor, that is correct. And one of the key points that the League has been trying to make, as well as us, is that by not understanding the scale of that impact, you know, it's hard to change the law permanently unless we know and have some data behind it. And so we are actively working to make sure that we have the data before we commit ourselves to another change in the system. Oh, I skipped one. Real quick, 2267 is a bill of note. It's sponsored by former councilmember, now Representative Tony Rivera, and it would create a 15-member Peace Officer Employment Study Committee, the purpose of which would be to research and report on peace officer staffing levels and recruitment and retention policies and practices, and the impact that those have on the rate of attrition and public safety. We anticipate being active and assuming this bill moves forward and were to become law, we would like to actively participate on that, including city representation on the committee.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I've mentioned to Thomas that should this be formed, that I would be happy to serve on that committee.
So in conclusion, Mayor, Council, Jenna and I are very busy this time of the year. We're down at the legislature, always available by our cellphones, and we are down there every day, including Fridays, so feel free to call us at any point. In addition to that, the weekly emails that we provide, provide an opportunity for something to flag, and then we're also reaching out and providing our monthly IGA updates. So if there is an issue that you see out there, you read about, please feel free to reach out to us, and we can do some research and get back with you. We can add it to our tracking list as well. So thank you again for this opportunity to present before you today.
Council, do you have any questions or comments?
Comment?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for all the time that you put into this, and I was pleasantly surprised when I saw that first Thursday night email. I really appreciate that information. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you so much for all that you do. I don't know what we would do without you advocating for the city of Peoria out there. It really makes a big difference to our citizens and our long-term viability.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for study session this evening.
All right, thank you. With that, we are adjourned until our 7 o'clock meeting.